Good evening, welcome to the November 4th, 2015 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order. We're going to break with tradition a little bit this evening to start with. We have a special guest. Mr. Luke Marlowe is here. And Mr. Marlowe is a Boy Scout. Would you mind coming forward and maybe leading us in the pledge to the flag? I could ask everybody to stand, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, from liberty to justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Marlowe. I really wanted you to get up here so we can get you on the camera, but that's all right. Thank you very much for doing that. We have another introduction that the Assistant City Attorney, Mr. David Ives, would like to make. Mr. Ives?
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. Come on over. It's my pleasure, it's my pleasure to introduce to you our new city attorney, Craig Tindall. He's been here a few days trying to get acclimated, and I'm thrilled to have him here to be working with him. So I would like y'all to meet Craig Tindall.
Honored to be here. No prepared speeches tonight.
Welcome to give an address if you'd like to.
Yeah, I have, other than that, I'm honored to be here and honored to serve the city. Thank you.
Well, we're glad to have you. Thank you, sir, for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, and before I move on any further, I want to express my gratitude for Ms. Kathy Jones, who more than adequately filled in for Mr. Young and myself as chairman pro tem for our last meeting. She did a wonderful job. I wasn't able to be here and Mr. Young was out of town, so thank you very much.
I know you watched it all on TV later.
All four hours.
It was a short meeting.
Yes, indeed. But thank you very much, Kathy.
Glad to do it. Thank you.
Okay. That being said, to move on to the first item on the agenda, and that's to approve the minutes of the September 2nd, 2015, and September 16th, 2015 Planning Commission meetings. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, I'll declare them approved as submitted. We have four public hearings scheduled this evening, the first of which is an annexation plan of services, an annexation petition for approximately seven point zero, excuse me, 70.1 acres located along Blackman Road. Benjamin Sykes and Thomas Meadow are the applicants. Ms. Green, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Our first item this evening is for you to consider a petition for annexation and a plan of services for property that totals approximately 7.1, 70.1 acres. The requested area, the area shown in orange on the map before you is 53 acres, and that property is owned by Benjamin Sykes and Thomas Meadows, and we do have petitions from them requesting the annexation. Also included as additional study area are rights of way of Blackman Road, State Route 840, and Manson Pike. The, and totaling the rights of way with this property is 70.1 acres, and so that's where that number comes from. The right-of-way along Blackman Road was included so that the city could review any future access onto the site. You can see that there is, to the south, a white rectangle, and that's an area that's in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County, and they did not request annexation, so we have left a gap so that we would not completely encompass them. Also to the south are areas that are shaded yellow, and to the east are areas shaded yellow, and that's the current city limits, and so the yellow area shows the existing city limits. The State Route 840 right-of-way was studied by various departments, and you have the plan of services before you, and none of the departments were opposed to the annexation of that additional right-of-way. The right-of-way along Manson Pike was included as there was an annexation for the parcel to which it's contiguous early this year, and staff oversight did not include that in the annexation study. We like to include the right-of-way in front of property we annex so that the developer wouldn't have to go through two separate jurisdictions to get approval for their plans. So if that right-of-way weren't in the city, they would get, have to get approval from Rutherford County in addition to the city of their plans, but if it is annexed, then they would only have to come to us for their review and approval. I mentioned before that this was requested by the property owners. They seek to have the property annexed, and there's a request to also change the zone for the properties. That will be the subject of the next public hearing. You do have before you a plan of services which outlines the services the city can provide and a timeframe for which we can provide them. The plan of services that's before you is also a little different than the ones that you've seen in times past. It's a shortened version. We believe with consultation from our legal department that it addresses these changes in state law, and so you can see it's a shorter version, and when you read it, you can see that we have services that can serve this property. When you make your motion, if you are approving it, you would be approving both the annexation petition and the plan of services. And rather than having two separate public hearings on one annexation request, we thought it was a cleaner method to have one public hearing, and I just wanted to point out to you that your motion would be approving both the plan of services and the annexation petition, so that's two separate items in one motion. And if I'm incorrect, Mr. Ives can, can straighten me out. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Otherwise, you should conduct a public hearing before making your recommendation to City Council regarding the annexation petition and plan of services.
Okay, so we're going to conduct two public hearings before we have a one motion, then?
I think one public hearing, but your motion would include both items. Mr. Ives?
Correct. We've got a public hearing on the annexation plan of services and then on the zoning application.
Yes, that will be two public hearings, but I, I think it will be cleaner if we go ahead and consider a motion for both the plan of services and the annexation after that public hearing, and then address the zoning. If there are comments and if there are oppositions, I'm concerned that it could be confusing as to whether they're opposing the annexation or opposing the zoning. So I think it would be cleaner for Planning Commission to act. I, I don't think that there would be very many times where we'll have a concern about the plan of services, but not about the annexation. I think those are kind of joined at the hip.
Okay.
And I believe we'll, it would be, it'll be clean to have one public hearing, vote on those, consider a motion to approve those two items, and then look at zoning. And there'll be times when there's not a zoning request, and they'll come in as an automatic interim zoning, but if there is a zoning request, that should be a separate public hearing after. The way we've structured it is that, assuming it's recommended and assuming council considers it, council will consider first the plan of services, and the reason is because that's the way the state law now reads. It says before there's an annexation, the council shall approve a plan of services. So they'll approve the plan of services. Plan of services will become effective when the zoning is effective. So if a plan of services approved, I'm sorry, when the annexation's effective. So if a plan of services approved and then the annexation is not approved, the plan of services essentially goes away because it's not become effective yet. If the party is requesting an interim zoning at that time, then the annexation will not become effective until the zoning is effective. Oftentimes, at least, an applicant will not want the annexation unless they get the zoning that they're asking for. And so we'll tie those together, and that way, if the plan of services approved, annexation is approved, and then the zoning is not approved, the applicant would have the option of remaining outside the city or going ahead to come in. Wave that.
Clean as mud. I'm glad you straightened that out.
It took a lot of help from our legislature to do this.
Let's not go there. Okay, are there any questions from members of the Planning Commission pertaining to the first public hearing tonight? Okay, before I open the public hearing, if you are here visiting us for the first time and have not attended a public hearing here at the council chambers before, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Those that would like to speak, please come to the microphone, clearly state your name and give your address, if you would, for the record. Keep your comments to no more than three minutes. And if you have questions, the staff will make a note of any questions you might have, and we'll try to address those at the conclusion of the public hearing. Make all your comments to the Planning Commission itself and not other audience members. All that being said, I'll open the public hearing at this time and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Nobody? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions from members of the Planning Commission? If not, we're ready for a motion.
So moved.
In a second, and to confirm, we are moving to approve the plan of services and the annexation petition.
Correct.
Right. Motion is made to approve and second it. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. The second public hearing this evening is a zoning application for approximately 53 acres located along Blackman Road to be zoned commercial highway, approximately 42.8 acres, and commercial fringe, approximately 10.4 acres simultaneous with annexation. Once again, Benjamin Sykes and Thomas Meadow are the applicants. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. This next public hearing is a companion to the previous public hearing, as it is a request to zone the properties which you just recommended annexation and approval of plan of services for to CH and CF district. And on the map, you can see this parcel has two colors on it. The orange area is the property which is approximately 42.8 acres, for which the request is to zone it CH, and CH is Commercial Highway District. The area shaded purple or blue, however it's showing up on your screen, is being requested to be zoned CF, and that's Commercial Fringe District, and that's about 10.4 acres. So the total property is about 53 acres, with the majority of it, almost 43 acres requesting to be CH, and then just a little over 10 acres to be CF. Commercial Fringe District is a district that we would see in transitional zones, where Commercial Highway District we typically see along major arterials in our community. Property to the south is zoned CH, that's Commercial Highway District, and CF as well. The applicants for this property mimicked the zoning to the south, and that was the Donald McDonald property, which was rezoned, I believe it was last year, if not it was just the year before, and so they wanted to keep the same distance of CF zoning that you see to the south on this property. This property is also bordered by a developing single-family subdivision to the east, and that property is zoned RS12, that's Single Family Residential District. Along the northwestern property line is State Route 840, and that separates it from the properties to the northwest, which are in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County. This property is within the Blackman Community, general development plan for the Blackman Community, and I've included an excerpt in your materials. And the plan recommends that this parcel develop as a quote "office distribution," an area that capitalizes on the accessibility and visibility from State Route 840, so the zoning request of CF and CH is not inconsistent with the Blackman Community land use plan. Mr. Clyde Roundtree is here, and we'll invite him to the lectern for just a moment to give you a brief presentation of the project, after which you should conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendation to City Council.
Mr. Roundtree, good evening.
Chairman Lamb, Commissioners Margaret Ann, thank you for the introduction. Margaret Ann capitalized it well. We just wanted to be consistent with what had happened at the border property. The CF zone is really a transition zone to protect the neighborhood. We felt like that was a real productive tool with Donald McDonald's property, and we're just staying consistent with that theme. Worked with city staff real intensely on the McDonald property, so we felt like to keep that kind of consistent would be appropriate. Up to my knowledge, there's been no resistance from the neighbors in terms of the potential rezoning. There was an inquiry. We tried to do our best, so that little out parcel is about a two-acre out parcel of land that's owned by a private ownership, and it's right now it's a rental home. We couldn't get any inroads onto who owns that property and if they'd be interested in annexation, so Margaret Ann worked with me on that, trying to get that done, but we weren't able to find out any other information. So we wish we could have to make it a little bit cleaner, but as far as Mr. Meadows' property, he's excited about the possibility to get it rezoned. We feel like it's sensitive to the surrounding neighborhood, and, and it's consistent with what's been done before. If you have any questions, I'm here for you. Thank you.
Any questions from Mr. Roundtree? Thank you, sir. Okay, at this time, I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Nobody? Okay, in that case, I'll close the public hearing. If there's no questions from members of the Planning Commission, we're ready for a motion. Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Third public hearing tonight is an annexation plan of services and annexation petition for approximately 5.96 acres located along Foxfire Court. Linda Smith is the applicant. Mr. Blomley, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Lamb and members of the Planning Commission. Our third public hearing tonight is with regards to the annexation of a 5.96 acre parcel that is located at 2631 Foxfire Court. It is the property colored in orange on the map that you see on the screen. The property owner has no immediately, immediate development plans for the property, and there's one single-family residence on the property. She came to us to discuss the possibility of annexation on the property and the possibility of a driveway access off of Maya Drive, which is to the west. You'll see that the existing city limits is to the south and to the west, and there's a stub street in the Preservate Indian Creek subdivision which stubs into her property. We told her that it wasn't required that she be annexed in order to get that driveway connection, but she did say that she did want to pursue the annexation, so we have studied the annexation and bring this before you tonight. As I mentioned, there is one single-family home on the property. There's no companion zoning request for the property, so if it is annexed, it would come into the city limits with an RS15 interim zoning classification. The RS15 zoning classification would allow it to be developed with minimum, single-family homes with minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet. But as I mentioned, Ms. Smith has indicated to us that she has no development intentions for the property. Subject property is bordered on its north and east sides by existing single-family residential development in the unincorporated county, and it's bordered on the south and west sides by residential development in the city that's zoned PRD, the Preservate Indian Creek Single Family Subdivision, and the Villas at Indian Creek, which is a townhome subdivision. Both of those are off of Fortress Boulevard. The subject property is contiguous with the existing city limits to the west and south, is within the city's urban growth boundary, and Ms. Smith has presented a petition to the city for annexation, and we have prepared a plan of services which has been included in the agenda packet. No right-of-way is included in the study area. Some of the departments did have some issues with annexing the property in its, in its current, current circumstances, and those circumstances being with it's a driveway off of Foxfire Court and it being addressed off of Foxfire Court. As you can see by the, on the map, if we can put that back up, all of the homes that are on Foxfire Court are in the unincorporated county, so this would be one home off of Foxfire Court that would be in the city, and, you know, in conversations over the years with emergency services, police, and fire, they have indicated to us that it's problematic when one home or when there is, when it's not consistent, the jurisdiction on a particular street, and that can cause confusion in times of emergency. But Ms. Smith has indicated that she does want to have her driveway off of Maya Drive, which is in the city, and that she wants to change her address to a Maya Drive address. So both police and fire have indicated to us that if those items are addressed, then they would have no issues with the annexation. So with that being said, I will read some recommended conditions of approval based on the feedback that we have received from the police department, the fire department, and the solid waste department, because much like police and fire, solid waste, if the property were to remain in its present condition, would have to drive down a county road to serve one residence. So based on the recommendations of the aforementioned departments, the planning staff recommends that the following conditions be met if the property is approved for annexation. Number one, a new driveway must be established off of Maya Drive. Number two, the new driveway off of Maya Drive must be a minimum of 15 feet in width, and that's a modification from my written comment in the staff comments, which said 20 feet. The fire department has indicated to us that they are willing to accept a 15-foot wide driveway. Number three, the new driveway must be of sufficient construction to support a fire apparatus, i.e. a fire truck, and a cross-section demonstrating, demonstrating this and sealed by a civil engineer should be submitted to the city engineering department for review and approval prior to construction. And number four, the address of the subject property shall be changed to a Maya Drive address. Once these conditions are met, the city will be able to provide services. And as you know, when we study annexation, we are studying whether, and producing the plan of services, we are studying whether or not the city will be able to provide services. With that being said, the Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing on this annexation request and then formulate a recommendation to the city council. I've discussed the conditions with Mr. Ives, and he feels that, our legal department feels that the, if the Planning Commission, the city council desire to annex this parcel, then it can be, the resolution can be formulated in such a way that it could be made effective based upon the conditions being met. And Ms. Smith is in the audience today, if you have any questions for her as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions as well.
Okay. Any questions from the Planning Commission?
Mr. Blomley, have those recommendations been conveyed to Ms. Smith?
They have, they have. I called her several days ago, and she has been actively working on getting quotes for the, for the driveway so that she can be prepared to install that. And she is here, if you have questions, that she may be able to answer with regards to the timing of the driveway construction.
Okay, if there's no questions, I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Hi, I'm Teresa Farmer. I live at 846 Spike Trail, which is the property alongside, next to her property. My, well, first, my statement would be, that property has been up for sale very recent, and if the property is sold, will that single-family home zoning be able to be changed?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Farmer. Who would like to note that? Anybody else?
My name is George Russell. I live at 2604 Foxfire Court. My primary concern with this property being annexed is, obviously, her property now will have to have a new existing driveway going into the city versus the county. Will, and if this property does get developed in the future, are you guys going to allow traffic to enter into the county subdivision or roads to be developed into the county subdivision? We have a very peaceful neighborhood, and we wouldn't, I know that most of the neighbors wouldn't care for a new existing road allowing traffic to connect into that, that community as it stands.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Russ. Nobody? Okay, in that case, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Blomley, would you like to address those two questions, please?
Be glad to. Ms. Farmer asked about the zoning of the property. As I mentioned, there's no zoning request for the property right now. Property would come into the city with an interim zoning classification of RS15. If Ms. Smith or a buyer of the property were to want to change the zoning of the property, they would have the right to make that request, but that request would go through the same public hearing process before both our Planning Commission and City Council, and so, you know, if there is a request, what that would be and whether or not it is approved is, is all just speculation right now. But there would be a public hearing process in which you would have an opportunity to voice your concerns at that time. With regards to Mr. Russell, I believe, his concerns about traffic into the county subdivision if the property is developed, my, just take on that at this moment is that that would be a possibility. You know, if that were to be developed as a single-family residential subdivision, it's been our practice to allow multiple ways in and out of subdivisions, and so I would say that it would be a possibility that we would see connectivity both to the west and to the north, i.e. connectivity to both to Maya Drive and to the north, to Foxfire Court. But of course, all of that is just, is speculation at this point as well, but the possibility would exist.
Any questions from members of the Planning Commission?
Mr. Chairman, just, just to be clear, I think the zoning, the interim zoning of RS15, you stated in your initial comments, and just to make sure Ms. Farmer understands, I don't think we want to be misleading at all, they could change that and request a zoning for RS12 or something other than that, but the fact that it's coming in as RS15 already would allow more than the one house that is there. So they wouldn't have to request a rezoning to actually add more houses to the existing land that's already there.
That's, that's correct. Under, under the RS15 zoning, this is about 5.96 acres, a subdivision of approximately 12 houses, 10 to 12 houses could be developed on that property under the interim zoning classification of RS15.
That's what I didn't remember was the actual number, but I wanted to make sure you understand, it's not asking, there wouldn't have to be a change in zoning for there to be that.
And if I misunderstood the question, I apologize.
No, but I have one more.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. Is there sewer available to this property?
Yes, there is. Sewer stubs out at Maya Drive into the property.
Any other questions or comments from members of the Planning Commission? If not, we're ready for a motion.
And Chairman Lamb, just as a reminder, this would be, the motion should be in the same form that Margaret Ann mentioned before, both the plan of services and the annexation itself.
In one motion.
In one motion, yes, sir.
And also contingent on the driveway and the addressing being, being corrected.
Staff comments would be included, sure.
Subject to the staff comments is probably not the norm for an annexation, but in this case, it's appropriate.
Chairman Lamb, I'll make a motion that we approve the annexation plan of services and, and the annexation petition along with the staff comments and requirements that Mr. Blomley outlined.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. And Ms. Farmer and Mr. Russell, this will go before the city council for another public hearing, so you'll have an opportunity to come back and speak any concerns again, okay? Just want to let you know, thank you for coming tonight. Just want to let you know, thank you for coming tonight.
Here's my office phone number if you'd like to call with your other questions.
Will we give letters?
Yes, Mr. Blomley, please. Okay, and the final public hearing tonight is a PRD amendment for approximately 91.5 acres located along Veterans Parkway to amend the Sheffield Park PRD. Beazer Homes is applicant. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. Our last public hearing tonight is with regards to the amendment of the Sheffield Park PRD zoning. If you recall, we had significant discussion about this at our day meeting last month. I'll go over the background first, and then I'll go over what they did to change their program book since the last meeting, last discussion that we had on this item. The subject property is located along the south side of Veterans Parkway. It's currently zoned PRD. It was approved originally in 2006 as the Brookside Murphy Station PRD, which was approved for 236 single-family residential lots. In 2013, Beazer Homes acquired the development and subsequently amended the PRD to suit their development plan. Since that time, the applicants have discovered the existence of wetlands on the property, additional wetlands that they were not aware of before. If you'll notice on the, on the plan on the screen, in the very bottom right-hand corner, there is a green area, and then that green area delineates wetlands that they have discovered. The wetland, the discovery of the wetlands has severely impacted their lot yield, and so what they are doing now is, is making a request before the planning staff to amend their PRD, to shift some of the minimum lot sizes around, the numbers of each of those minimum lot sizes, so that they are able to retain their minimum lot yield or their maximum lot yield of 236, which is what they have, were originally approved for in 2006. The major elements of the PRD amendment do include some modifications to the existing street layout, as well as an increase in the number of 8,000-square-foot lots. There are 8,000-square-foot lots, 10,000-square-foot lots, 12,000-square-foot lots, and 15,000-square-foot lots. The number of 8,000-square-foot lots is proposed to increase from 99 to 141. The number of 10,000-square-foot lots will decrease from 37 to 36. The number of 12,000-square-foot lots will decrease from 55 to 37, and the number of 15,000-square-foot lots will decrease from 47 to 20. And as I mentioned, increase in the number of 8,000-square-foot lots will allow the applicant to continue the original lot yield of 236. The exterior building materials for the development will remain the same as origin, or as, as approved in the 2013 amendment, which include masonry fronts, brick, stone, and cement board siding, and vinyl sides and rear. And the front entry garages will not protrude more than 10 feet past the front of the house, which was a part of the 2013 PRD amendment as well. The setbacks for the 8 and 10,000-square-foot lots are, the front setback is 25 feet, and the front setback for the 12 and 15,000-square-foot lots is 35 feet. So because of the reduction in the amount of driveway parking, staff recommended to the applicant that they investigate, including some additional parking areas in the common areas. And so what I have set in your, on your tables is a, an exhibit provided by Mr. Mulchan with SCC that shows some additional guest parking areas that could be utilized. What he's looking to do is, at the amenity center, he's looking to add about 20 spaces, and then there will be some small parking areas, both on the east and west side of the development. So with respect to the 8,000-square-foot lots, it is generally consistent with the lot sizes in the neighboring city subdivisions. In my staff report, I detailed the minimum lot sizes in some of the neighboring subdivisions, and this is, the lot sizes in Sheffield Park are generally consistent with, with those adjacent subdivisions. With that being said, I would invite Mr. Mulchan to the lectern, as he has a PowerPoint presentation that he would like to give to you.
Good evening, Chairman Lamb, commissioners. Kind of want to do, give you guys a little quick little overlook of Sheffield Park and the revisions we've made in regards to this request for amendment to the PRD. As Matthew alluded to, the main reason for the modification to this plan is for the wetlands that we come to find in the last year or so in the southeastern quadrant of the property. Those wetlands, there's two, there's one that's actually crossing the boundary between Sheffield and Indigo next door on the east that is being mitigated. There is also another one that's more internalized to Sheffield Park, as much larger and a much more ecologically diverse wetland, and we felt it appropriate to leave it as is and incorporate it into an open space. With that being said, incorporating that into the open space, it detrimentally changed the lot layout and street configuration for the subdivision itself, thus necessitating the change in the overall lot type structure in regards to what, how many of each of the lot products that are available for Sheffield Park, moving more towards the smaller 8,000-square-foot lot product in order for us to facilitate getting back our lot yield in the, you know, loss of lot area in regards to the wetlands. So just want to kind of go through a really quick little presentation if I can. Existing conditions, you see Sheffield Park there in yellow, right along Veterans Parkway, just to the south and west of where St. Andrews Drive intersects and tees into Veterans Parkway. You can see from this aerial that, for the most part, the development has taken the northeast quadrant of the property. That's for Section 1, it's currently under development, has probably about 15 homes already completed, and Section 2, which was recently brought through, preliminary plat has been approved for that, and it's just to the south of that. As Matthew alluded to, this PRD is in tune with the surrounding subdivisions and properties in regards to zoning and lot sizes. You can see to the west is a future portion of Weston Park, PUD. To the east is Indigo, PUD, and then there's a couple unincorporated portions of county RM-zoned properties, aboding some of the other portions of the property. Regards to the current plan and the old plan, this, this planner shows in red, the area is Section 1. That is what is pretty much fully on the ground in a roadway and infrastructure capacity with, like I said in the first section, as you come into the main entrance off of Veterans, majority of the first homes have been built in this, what was Section 1A, Section 1B, which is over here, which is mainly 10,000, 12,000, 10,000-square-foot lots. The roadway infrastructure is now fully complete, and for the most part, the majority of those homes all throughout Section 1 have already been pre-sold and are ready for development. Here's an example of one of the existing homes in Sheffield currently, showing some of their architectural style and materials in regards to the homes that are going up currently. Little comparison between the plan, like Matthew said, the main focus of the change in the project has pretty much been the southern third portion of the plan from the original plan in 2013. As you can see, the wetlands area, more or less, has kind of encapsulated in this area of the previously approved PRD, thus the change to the new plan over on the, on the right, showing where the wetlands have been, more or less, set in a public open space for retention and, you know, keeping that in tune with the wetlands and the biodiversity of that space. That's more or less how the roadway structure has been changed, you know, for the slightest part, but then again, the change in the characteristics of the lot types, as you can see, a lot of this has now gone to an 8,000-square-foot minimum lot size, but we also have some 12,000-square-foot lots yet to come, and another section of 15,000-square-foot lots that's in the future Section 3, which will be coming to the city within the next few months for construction plans on that. As Matthew alluded to, the change in the amount of lots is primarily gone to the 8,000-square-foot minimum-sized lots, so that we can get back to the 236 allowable units that were, approved originally in 2006, and again with the revised PRD in 2013, with the larger lots getting a little, you know, shrinking in the amount of, of lots for that, for those sizes as you go through. A little bit of a phasing plan, or at least the conceptual idea of where we're moving forward with this project, as I said, Section 1 here in the red is pretty much, infrastructure's all built out, most of the homes in that have already been pre-sold. Section 2, just adjacently to the south of Section 1, is already, the preliminary plat has already been approved, moving forward with construction plans, those should be coming into the city and getting approved as well. And then moving forward with Section 3 will provide the second access point to Veterans Parkway, so now you will have two entrances and exit points in and out of the subdivision back to the main thoroughfare of Veterans over there. And then subsequently, moving the rest of the project in a clockwise fashion off of Section 2, and running around and moving up to the last segment up here along Veterans is kind of the plan of attack for the project. Again, design standards, they'll still be one, one-and-a-half, two-story homes. The homes will range in size from a minimum 1,400 square feet up to 3,200 square feet or a little above. All homes will have at least two bedrooms. Lot sizes, again, range from 8,000 minimum to 15,000-plus. Setbacks, as Matthew alluded to, 25-foot for the 8 and 10,000-square-foot lots and 35-foot for the, well, the 15s, with 5-foot on the sides and 20 on the rear. Again, building materials, staying consistent with the previously approved PRD, brick, stone, and cement board siding will be, is the main primary focus of the front elevations, with the sides and rear allowing for bricks, cement board, and stone on the sides, but the primary anticipated material on that will be heavy-gauge vinyl siding. One of the caveats with this plan, as it was previously, as it will begin with this, is any homes adjacent to Veterans Parkway will be required to have brick, stone, or hardy, or cement board on all facades on the structure that are immediately adjacent to Veterans Parkway. Again, there's another example of existing home already at Sheffield, as well as another example there. Sidewalks will continue throughout the project on both sides of the street, side or front yards. All utilities will remain underground as previously approved. All homes will have two-car garages. Garages will either be front or side-loaded product. Garage doors, as Matthew alluded to, will not protrude any more than 10 feet past the front elevation of the home, and all driveways will be concrete. Again, another example of another one of the existing homes already built in Sheffield. We'll move into the amenities phase. The main portion of the amenities program is the, centrally located in the, in the community as it was in the previous PRD. This will house the cabana and pool for the community. One of the new features that we've incorporated into this in regards to the change in the structure of the roadways and lots is a pedestrian path, which more or less creates a mid-block pedestrian movement between the southern portion and the amenity center as a means of pedestrian egress besides the sidewalks along the roadway. Access, as I spoke to earlier, the existing main entrance, you can see here in this picture, looking out on towards Veterans. On the left, you can see the entrance signage, the folly, the structure that's being currently built, it's almost complete, along with the median and landscaping. Secondary access point, as I alluded to, in Section 3, which will be forthcoming, will allow the, you know, second means of ingress, egress to the community off of Veterans. And then again, three future connectivity points, one on the west, to Weston Park, as that develops out in the future, another one to the east, which is tying into the existing approved roadway for Indigo, and then one on the south, leading to future development on the south. And we'll be continuing with the 40-foot public right-of-ways on the minor streets and 50-foot public right-of-way on the major streets. With that, I'd open up for any questions, committee to squishman have.
Okay. Any questions from the planning commission?
Can I finish this?
Mr. Counselor, ahead.
So on the 8,000-square-foot lots, and you said they all have two-car garages throughout the subdivision, and so with the 25-foot front setback on the 8,000-square-foot lot, there's still room for two cars in the driveway and two cars in the garage?
Correct.
So there's the four parking spaces on the lot, and then you've added the additional parking areas.
Yes, staff has been concerned with the regards to the 25-foot, because technically by ordinance, they cannot count the two garage spaces as part of that four, as part of the count for four. So staff has, has been concerned in regards to having visitor parking. That's what the handout that Matthew passed out is, what we've worked on today in regards to providing additional visitor parking areas located in three different locations across the, you know, the rest of the future portions of this design. We are also currently looking at potentially a different option with Beazer, our client, in regards to, is there a way that we can work on, you know, with regards to their product, if there's a way we can make a larger driveway, recess the garages a little bit potentially. They've, right now, they're lurking on that, they just came to light today, that we're looking at all their products that they're anticipating on using here at Sheffield, if there's a way that we can resuscitate pushing that garage back to allow for two extra parking spaces in a driveway, but that's still up for evaluation. But in the interim, we're anticipating on doing these three little areas for additional visitor parking.
Okay. So that would just still be my concern, because like, if you look at the southwest section, that's all 8,000-square-foot lot, where the visitor parking is added is, is really isn't anywhere near all, all of that section, or maybe that wasn't changed, but it just seems like we're going up so much on the 8,000, which, you know, okay, I understand all that, but might, you know, I just want to make sure we have enough visitor parking in there and don't end up with a lot of road.
And so, and Matthew and I, as I stated, we just started working on this situation today in regards to finding resolve as to making certain that we are providing more adequate space for our residents and their guests, who have places to park, that we're not, you know, having issues with parking within the subdivision.
And we may have approved it like this back in 2006, so, you know, I don't remember that far back.
And the reason why, you know, and it was approved with the 25-foot setbacks back in, you know, years ago, but because we're increasing the number of, of the lots with the 25-foot front setback, adding about 40 or so of, of those homes, which will mean that there will be less driveway spaces overall in the development, it was something that, that staff was concerned about, and, you know, and knowing the planning commission's concern in, in previous public hearings about having adequate visitor parking areas, we wanted to express that concern to the developer and, and work on a way to address that.
Was that a stipulation at the afternoon meeting?
Well, oh, no, sir.
No, it was, it was something that we began discussing after, after that meeting.
Yeah. And on the original plan, it looks like all the 8,000-square-foot lots were on the southeast side, and we did not have any additional visitor parking when we did that originally.
Correct.
But that was 99 lots in that area, and now the 8,000-square-foot lots are kind of, you know, scattered.
They're kind of, they're scattered in different various places around the project.
And what he's planning on doing with the, with the central parking area around the pool is rather than just adding on-street parking, or pseudo-on-street parking like he is in the two other places, he's looking to actually replicate that, the 20-space parking lot on the other side of the pool, so that, you know, while that's remote from a lot of the other areas where that parking might be needed, it would provide the greatest abundance of visitor parking in that area.
Okay.
Anything else, Ms. Counselor?
No, thank you.
Mr. Young?
How many houses are constructed out there already?
13, 14, close to 13.
Close to 15.
About 15 so far.
And you're, and you're using a heavy-grade aluminum siding as opposed to Hardybacker?
On the sides and rears of the buildings that are not adjacent to Veterans, the option is that, you know, primarily the main structure for the sides and rear would be the heavy-gauge aluminum siding.
Heavy-gauge vinyl.
Vinyl siding, sorry.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
If no other questions from members of the planning commission, I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Discussion or question by members of the planning commission?
Well, Mr. Blomley, is this the, the parking issue? Is that something you're gonna, y'all are continuing to kind of look at and work on, or we feel, do just staff feel good with the, what we have presented here tonight?
It's, it's not ideal. It's, but it is a step in the right direction, in the right direction. There are other opportunities for common area parking. The, Mr. Mulchan has indicated that his client does not want to, or is hesitant to explore the opportunities that are within the TVA easement, but there are some common areas within the TVA easement that could be utilized for additional parking. But certainly what they've provided is, is better than not having any, any guest parking. If Mr. Mulchan and his client determine that there is something that they can do with the setbacks, to increase the garage setbacks so that they can achieve the, the four cars in the driveway as opposed to two cars in the driveway, then that is something that we can bring back to the planning commission as, as old business. And what I think that we have tasked Mr. Mulchan with doing is, is trying to look into that prior to city council, but, you know, what we're considering tonight is, is the, the plan that, that he's provided with the, with the guest parking. If they're able to do something with the setbacks, that would have to be brought back to the planning commission.
What is the width of the road in that southwestern corner there, the long cul-de-sac?
I would say it would be a 40-foot right-of-way, looking at Mr. Huddleston, and he is giving me the thumbs up, with a 24-foot roadway section.
So that's really, if you park something on the street there, it's gonna be pretty tight.
This concern that, you know, we're talking about, can you give us other, other subdivisions as an example where there's just a 25-foot setback that, that you can think of where maybe we know that there's a problem with on-street parking, or, I mean, I'm just curious because we've had conversations like this, but never to the point of, well, we want, in a subdivision such as this, that we want you to have more parking. So there's been, there's something here that's kind of brought it more to your attention, and I'm just curious as to kind of the, the thought process.
Well, I, I think one of the reasons why, why I brought it to the attention of the applicant is because I know it's, it's been an issue that the planning commission has felt strongly about in the past.
Right.
I would, not that this is a, a problem subdivision, but an example of where we have the guest parking areas and the, and, and Margaret and I, I can't remember what the setbacks are in Blackman Farm, I'm thinking probably along the lines of 25, but Blackman Farm off of Franklin Road has several guest parking areas scattered throughout the subdivision. I've, I've never been made aware of a problem in that subdivision with on-street parking, but that's a similar situation with regards to, and, and my memory may be failing me, but I believe that their front setbacks are about, about 25 feet, about the same amount.
And 8,000 square foot lots?
Those lots there are probably more along the lines of 5,000 to 6,000 square feet. They're smaller.
Okay.
What is the name of the subdivision off of Last Cassits Pike, just beyond the sign from the left-hand side?
The villages of Garrison Cove?
Yes. What, what's that lot size?
That's, that's zoned RZ, which, RZ has a minimum lot size of 3,000 square feet for single-family detached homes. I would say those lots are probably more along the lines of 7, 8,000 square feet, just estimating.
But you're also dealing with a wider roadway there, aren't you?
Yeah, our, our residential cross-section, we saw a lot more 50-foot right-of-ways. I don't know what the right-of-way width in the villages of Garrison Cove, and I'm looking at our engineers to see if they can, if they can provide some, some, some memory on that. But our standard right-of-way cross-section for local, local residential streets is 40 feet now, but in a lot of our older subdivisions, we did have the 50-foot rights-of-way with wider roadways as well.
Ms. Charleston.
Chairman Lamb, members of the planning commission, to help add some, some information to Matthew's comments, the villages of Garrison Cove is zoned RZ. There was a requirement in our planning, in our zoning ordinance for RZ developments to have a 50-foot street, or 50-foot right-of-way and a 33-foot street for RZ development unless that requirement is waived by the planning commission. Based on the timing that it was developments, my recollection, it was a, was a 50-foot right-of-way with 33 feet of pavement, which would be a three-lane section.
Do you know if they had designated visitor parking?
In villages of Garrison Cove?
Yeah.
The only visitors' parking I'm aware of is at the amenity center, which is, which is close to Last Cassits Pike, and there's, there's maybe a half dozen to a dozen parking spots there.
Twenty parking spaces here, I'm not gonna walk down here to it.
So, Mr., so, anybody on staff that might answer, in the subdivisions where we have required the visitor parking, and we have scattered that around in several different subdivisions, several different, do, can you tell us if you know if people make use of that visitor parking, or do they still just park on the street?
It's been my experience that the visitor parking has been used. Two, two subdivisions that I can think of, I mentioned Blackman Farm, I have friends that live in Blackman Farm, I've used their guest parking before and then walked to the, to my friend's house.
How far?
Florence Point is another, I'm sorry?
How far?
It was probably about, I probably walked 200, 300 feet, I'd say. Florence Point is another subdivision that has guest parking areas. Those areas, you know, I, I've been in Florence Point, I've noticed that, that those are pretty heavily used at times, and they are scattered throughout that subdivision.
And I'll say, and before zoning applications are made, we have a conference with the applicants, and this has always been something that we bring up, and typically, we ask them to address this before it comes to you. And there are many, I know Mr. Balchandra gets complaints about people parking on the street, maybe they're blocking the mailbox, and the post office is unhappy and won't deliver the mail, and sometimes I think, case in lane, there, there may not be enough room for vehicles to travel down there. So it's something that maybe we don't discuss at planning commission level because we ask them to address it ahead of time, or have the driveways that are, are, can accommodate those four spaces. And garages sometimes, Mr. Ray Law would, I think, wax poetically about how garages can be used as places to store areas or shops, not necessarily places to park cars, so we don't always count them, or they're not allowed to be counted in the zoning ordinance, when some plan developments, we do allow it.
But I, I think the problem with even, if you do have the parking places, I, I went out off of St. Andrews the other day, and about the fourth or fifth street off to the right there, there was a, a road and someone I needed to visit there, so I pulled up, it's dark, it's raining, I get to their house, they've got two cars in their garage, I've got two cars in the driveway, and the cars are obviously backed up to the sidewalk, so I parked on the side of the street. I would have never known if there was guest parking anywhere in the neighborhood because, well, it's a 24-foot street and I parked on the side of the roadway, well, somebody down the street had parked on the other side. We, we basically had blocked the road off, and, and so it, it just makes it very difficult to, to see how streets are supposed to operate when there's no place to park. I mean, and, and there's really not, it's an arid road to begin with, so I don't, just makes it difficult.
Well, I'm primarily concerned with that one long roadway. It's, it looks like it has 35, 40 lots on it, it's just a long, single-shot road. Ms. Young left at a good time. And parking on that roadway is gonna be very problematic, and there's really nothing you can do to prevent that and without, without some kind of guest parking being in there. I don't know the quality of life of the people that live there and emergency vehicles being able to get in there, whatever, it might be, I don't know. I think we would approve that, knowing there's going to be problems with it. It's just a long straight shot with no, no way but one way out there.
It's a good point, though, that really anytime we have visitor parking, we, we should probably make sure that it's in a spot that people pass it on the way so they know there is a place they could go, you know, in this place, it would make sense to have it closer to the front, so people at least see it, know it's available, or something that says visitor parking this way, or if it's closer down to the end of the road, or...
But you're walking almost three blocks.
Yeah, but if it's in the front, I'm not gonna walk to that.
Right, well, maybe if there's a little sign that says there is visitor parking 500 feet down the road, or whatever, or something.
Some of that TVA easement.
Mr. Blomley, would a deferral be in order to see if you can work out some of these parking situations?
I'd... Mr. Mulchan?
I know that's not what you want to hear, but...
We feel like that needs a little more thought.
I'd like to bring Mr. Toby Tobias with Beazer Homes to talk about some of the HOA requirements, CCR stuff that, you know, has been used in other subdivisions that they've worked on in regards to visitor parking in relationship to, you know, those restrictions and stuff like that, but, Mr. Tobias?
Good evening, Toby Tobias, land manager for Beazer. We do stipulate in our CCNRs, you know, with, with our HOA, that there would be designated parking in certain areas, and it is up to the homeowners to make sure that their friends, neighbors, or whoever is, is visiting, would be using the visitor parking. We haven't had any problems at our Riverwood development in Hermitage, you know, pertaining to guest parking. So I, I think that this is more of a, an HOA issue, once we've decided on where our parking will be, that it would be enforced via the CCNRs.
Is that subdivision that you're referring to in Hermitage, similar 8,000 square foot with the 25-foot front setback?
We have very, we have many different, different sizes. You know, we have townhomes, as well as alley loads, a single-family, yes.
In those HOA restrictions, is there anything enforceable or part of where you gotta have access to the garage to park a car?
Yes, and that's, that's part of, you know, we would like to see if we could put something enforceable in that, as far as vehicles are supposed to be parked in the garage, you know, and, and use of your garage would be, you know, minimal storage, or, you know, storage, but still be able to park your vehicles in them.
What are the consequences if you do not, and you're part of association?
Well, you know, we, we have a, even a fine sys, a system. You know, we, we do have, I'm not gonna call them the, the parking police, but we do have security that go through our developments, and you get two warnings before a fine is established, and it does seem to work.
I just think that this needs a little more study. Is a motion in order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes, sir.
I move we defer.
Motion is made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion is made and seconded, all in favor indicate the saying aye. Aye, all opposed. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. I think you need to work with the staff on this a little closer, and we'll talk about it with the staff as well and try to give you a little guidance on what might work for you.
The next, with this deferral, would be going to the next meeting, two weeks, the daytime meeting?
It'll be the daytime meeting for two weeks.
At the 18th.
May I make a suggestion, gentlemen?
Yes, sir.
Use some of that TVA easement that you can't do anything with, except park cars in it.
Yeah, the, the problem is, we know how TVA possibly might react to us using the easement.
Yeah.
You know, we will, we're, we're doing our due diligence right now to see if we can purchase, but with that being said, you know, the time factors involved, we're not sure, you know, how it'll relate to being able to use that market.
Well, we've seen they've looked for parking pretty easily, but don't plant a tree there.
Yeah.
Whatever you do. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
That concludes our public hearing, portion of our agenda tonight. We'll move on to staff reports and other business. Mrs. Green?
Yes, sir, I have one item, and that is a request for mandatory for-all action from you, and it's for the Ascend Federal Credit Union located on West Clark Boulevard. You may remember, November of last year, you reviewed some plans to do a scrape and replace the existing facility on West Clark Boulevard, was completely removed, demolished, and then they constructed a new facility and got a certificate of occupancy for that facility last week. On the plans, there's an exist, there are several existing drainage easements, but there's one located in the center of the site, where there's no structure located on top of this easement, and it does not serve any public purpose. I've asked Mr. Sam Huddleston to look at the request and see if the city engineering, engineer's office has any desire to keep that drainage easement, and he's indicated that it doesn't serve any public purpose, and we have no desire to retain it, and the applicants wish to have that removed from their property since it also doesn't serve a private drainage purpose. If you do recommend approval of this, then I have placed it on the city council agenda tomorrow for consent agenda. If you don't approve it tonight, we'll take it off tomorrow for further discussion, but because we feel like this is a fairly simple matter and it's really cleaning up an area and not changing it significantly, we would ahead and brought it to you under other business. Mr. Matt Taylor's the applicant, Rob Mulchen is not here, but I can answer your questions. He's prepared a illustration and description for the property, which we need for the mayor to take in reaction. So we have the materials we need, Mr. Ives is working on getting those documents prepared, and if you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions by members of the planning commission? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval.
Superstal staff comments, uh-huh. Motion is made and seconded, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Anything else, Ms. Green?
Not for me, sir.
Mr. Blomley?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Drives?
No, sir.
Mr. Whitaker, you've been awful quiet tonight.
I'm learning every minute.
It's very uncharacteristic of you. If there's no further business, we stand adjourned.